Morning Jim, yeah, I'm just about to start the live recording, so I'll proceed once we're ready to get underway.
Okay, I think we're ready to roll, thank you.
Okay convenor, that's the live recording underway.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, welcome to the special meeting of Environment Housing 15th December. We've got two items on the agenda, but because it's a remote meeting, I'm required to read out a statement in advance. Thank you everyone for attending today's meeting. First, just a brief statement on the protocols to be followed during this remote meeting. Please note this meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube and a recording will be made available for public viewing following the meeting. Can members please mute their microphones throughout the meeting when not speaking? This is important since it helps to ensure the quality of the audio for all present. Your microphone should be switched on when invited to speak and switched off when you have finished speaking. Please use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak at any point. Can I also ask that officers introduce themselves by confirming their name and role before speaking for the first time on any item? If any member lose connection or have any technical issues during the meeting, please alert the clerk as soon as possible either using the chat function within the meeting or by email, telephone. I'll now ask the clerk to carry a roll call of the elected members participating in today's meeting.
Thank you Chair. councillor Errol.
Present.
Councillor Gibson.
Present.
Councillor Houston.
Present.
Councillor Beryl.
Present.
Councillor McPherson.
Yeah.
Councillor Madury.
Present.
Councillor McGill, I don't think he's here yet. Okay, thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Present.
Councillor Tolmasz.
Yes, present.
That's the eight members present, Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And apologies and substitutions.
We have apologies from councillor Jane Hutchison and councillor Beryl is substituting for her chair.
Okay, thank you. And declarations of interest. So if we've any cyclists, you can't take part. That was just a joke by the way. Okay, thank you, no declarations. Okay, we move on to item three, which is the construction of walk cycle of Stirling tender acceptance contract award. And can I remind you that the appendix is exempt because of the commercial nature of the document? If there are any questions on appendix two, we will have to go into private session. So can I invite David Hopper to introduce the paper, please?
Thank you Chair, it's David Hopper, Service Manager for Sustainable Development and Public Transport. As part of the council's response to the climate emergency, Walk Cycle of Stirling is our premier active travel project being delivered through the City Region Deal Programme. This key active travel project is critical in not only linking key communities, but it also sets a high standard of active travel to allow for significant place making as well across Stirling. The development of this project has been extensively shared with communities throughout its development. There's been considerable joint work done with Scottish Government and Transport Scotland this year in developing the final business case, which was approved by the Joint Committee in October of this year. This report seeks approval for the tender award to allow the works contracts to commence early next year. The contracts are expected to conclude in March 2024. And I should just point out that the recommendation does reference appendix one and it should read appendix two and apologies for that, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thanks David. I'll open it up for questions, councillor Madury.
Yes, thank you. Obviously in the past we've been quite successful in getting awards for improving or creating active travel routes throughout the area, but we've then struggled to maintain these routes from that, which obviously then has a negative impact on on the active travel community from that. So just wanting to check that we do have the maintenance budget plan for us and so it will last longer than, well, longer than a few years after it's been constructed, it will be maintained for a good time ahead as well.
Absolutely councillor, it's a very pertinent point and something that we've been discussing particularly with our roads colleagues for some time. As we move towards much more extensive development of the active travel infrastructure, it's critical that we consider the ongoing maintenance of that and are not allowed to get, in fact, it has to be of a premier quality if we're really going to encourage people to actively participate in walking and cycling. So that's fully recognised and working closely with our roads colleagues and developing maintenance schedules to follow these infrastructure projects.
Thank you.
I've got Brian Roberts with his hand up.
Thanks Chair and thanks councillor Madury for the question. I think your point is possibly being made against some of the previous off-road cycle routes that we've done. Obviously this package of works that's coming forward effectively creates improvements to just now with roads and footway areas. So it's constructing cycleways within the existing adopted road. So it would form part of the maintenance plans going forward as part of the council's budget. I think the point that you raise is a really good one in relation to a lot of the off-road cycle routes, you know, the ones between Dunan and Callander, the one out to fill in, there's a couple where those have been put in that are not part of the publicly adopted network and there's various maintenance arrangements in place through the funders at the time or indeed some of the landowners. And there's undoubtedly a piece of work we need to do to understand those off-road networks that aren't part of the formal public highways, how we have a life cycle maintenance for that, because you're absolutely right, there needs to be maintenance of these networks as well as the investment, the capital investment upfront. But rest assured on the ones in front of you today, it forms part of the public highway effectively.
Before I bring others in, Brian, I think that councillor Madury raises a valid point because we have both officers and elected members gone on various routes with the active cycling community. And I think overhanging trees, bushes etc probably is the biggest concern that they have. So it's a point well made. I've got councillor McPherson and councillor Errol.
Yeah, David, thanks for that introduction of paper, obviously I welcome this. I think from my point of view, you know, we've all got to look after our own words here, I think. Yes, and you wait for them and say, well, you know, Tibby's Bray opens on Friday this week at four o'clock actually. This is the improvement there in networks linked in Flynn and Kelly. But you know, we had to park that as a beauty, any mitigation money, so you know, the community got gained that and other path networks and cycle networks around the villages, but you actually got the islands, you know, to avoid the major growth area. So that's, while that's pertinent, I think David, my question would be is obviously the actual travel plan, you know, future projects 2022 to 2027, are there a number of key ones in my award? I think the most pressing one for me would be the travel cycling to Banatburn to Kelly. And I know that's in the first future projects near, and that one missed out on beauty and then the funding because it's too expensive. So I also welcome this paper, it's easy to be very city centre centric. And you know, I'll be campaigning going forward to ensure that the Banatburn to Kelly link is one of the key ones in my award and probably Banatburn to Kelly as well also. But with regard to future plans, you know, where are we with that given it's 2022 to 2027?
Yeah, so quite rightly you point out that there is a further element of active travel within the City Region Deal funding and some four and a half million pounds of core government money. We are currently looking at developing that, that suite of prioritised projects for, you know, for spending in that regard. So we're working on that, a kind of rationale as to how we prioritise those projects and we're intending to engage councillors early next year to have these discussions around it. So I note your comments councillor McPherson and recognise them strongly. So we'll be in touch with you in the early part of next year to discuss that suite of projects and we recognise the linkages around eastern villages as being important.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Errol then, councillor Tolmasz.
Yeah, thank you Jim. The councillor McPherson raises a good point about the wider network that we're all interested in. I mean, what I would value, and obviously we're debating this contract tender today, but David, can I take the opportunity that I'd quite like an update and a briefing maybe in the new year on two things important to my area, the King's Highway project and the Strathair Aberfoyle to Stirling route. So again, I think, I think probably wider conversations and debates and briefings about our approach to the wider network would be, I think, welcomed by all councillors. Just on this specific one, I know we had a briefing on this and thank you for providing that opportunity. I found it very useful to be able to go into this in some detail, which was very useful and very informative. We both know, we all know that there's been some concerns raised about certain aspects of the route. I think it would be important to mention that, that there's been a huge consultation, as you say, but there are still areas where there are, shall we say, a difference, a divergence of opinion as to the solution that might be in place. And I think it's maybe an opportunity just to talk about how the design of what's being planned does have flexibility built into it from a point of view of trying to future proof it if changes need to be made.
Yes, I mean, yeah, we had an honest discussion at the briefing around this and you're right, there are, and there is still probably one community in the moment that have, that do have, let's say, moderate concerns around, around the approach. We have met with them on several occasions and I think we are talking about a number of individuals within that group that perhaps have concerns, but we have pledged to work with them over the next, over the following months to come to amicable solutions. Essentially, you know, the City Centre South project that you're aware of, and that offers some mitigation to some of the concerns that this particular community has. And I think just having a trusting, honest engagement throughout the delivery of this will mitigate a lot of those concerns. And I genuinely think that is the case. So yeah, but continued dialogue will absolutely happen.
Thank you. And can I, sorry Jim, can I just, there is, we discussed this from a point of view of future proofing, that where possible in the design, that has been taken into account.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the example that we spoke about around Albert Place and pursuing the shared space, which is the future, the more future-proofed approach, it's more futuristic approach. If, if these routes don't necessarily work out, then we can revert back to potentially, as I said, white line marking areas and reverting back to what was there before in some degree.
No, thank you. I think that's useful. Thanks very much.
Yeah, I'm quite impressed by the flexibility that we have in this. Councillor Tolmasz then councillor Beryl.
Yes Jim. Okay, thank you very much. Just a comment and then a question. And the comment is, this is great news for Stirling. If you think about what the infrastructure was in Stirling 20 years ago and compared to what we're doing now, we've come leaps and bounds and this will help in the progress towards that. So I wanted to welcome it. But also kind of suggests that there is another couple of critical places that we need to look at. And one is, okay, the Mano Poweris and that link from that. I remember being involved in discussion in this in 2008, when it was a concern to the, okay, the cyclist community and it's still a concern. And, and the other one is people in Dumblane who feel that they are on the edge of all these routes and they can use the Glen Road, which has been done up by volunteers, and that's fine, but at this time of the year when we have dark, okay nights. So just see if you can give a little bit of a progress report on what we're going to do to try and connect Dumblane to the network. Thank you.
Yeah. So on your first point, you'll be aware of the developments associated with the Banapous hiatus. It's been, it's been there for many, many years and it's, it is a high priority project. Sustrans is part of the NCN, the National Cycle Network, and Sustrans have pledged to fund the works of that during 2024 and onwards. But we're working on the land procurement and the precursory development aspects to come up with a design for that. So we will see what's commenced 2024 at the latest. It's seen as a priority. The Dumblane-Bridge of Allen link is again very important, fully recognised linking, you know, a strong community with Dumblane, with Stirling and Bridge of Allen. And it is on the list of active travel projects and as we'd mentioned in the City Region Deal Programme. And it's prior, it's being prioritised and ranked accordingly. So as has been asked for, I'm happy to set up briefings and possible, sit down briefings and update briefings to members in the early part of next year about this.
Yeah, David, we're getting into a wider discussion about cycling and active travel, but you can see that members are very keen to promote this. So perhaps a briefing on the wider picture would be very helpful. Yeah, okay. Councillor Beryl then councillor Errol.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Apologies not being on the committee normally, I'm insufficiently familiar with the history of what's been done and said and I haven't been to the briefings. I was just intrigued by the comment on the consultations and it says 3.6. Consultation will continue throughout the construction phase, which must be quite unusual for a project to continue the consultation. Could I just ask about the nature of that consultation while construction is actually going on?
Consultation stroke communications, I mean largely the consultations have been concluded. We do have a separate project running called City Centre South, which, which is still in as it's a consultative phase. So it should probably read consultation stroke communications. We just want to work with the communities and there may be some small idiosyncrasies that we discover on route as we, as we start to develop the work. So just to keep the communications going more than anything.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Councillor Errol's hands come down. No other questions? Any comments people want to make? None? Okay, can we go on to page one, the recommendation, that's to approve the award of the contract to the recommended supplier and to note that Stirling Council Land and Operations will also play their part of a section of the footway to complete. So are we agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed. Thank you very much. Move on to the next item. And it's replacement of refuse collection vehicles. The paper's going to be introduced by our fleet manager Kirsty MacLeod.
Good morning, thank you convenor, Kirsty MacLeod, fleet manager. Today we're seeking approval, committee approval, sorry, for the award of the contract for replacement refuse collection vehicles and to note contract arrangements in place until the new vehicles are delivered. We seek committee approval of the award recommendation report as attached as appendix one for the supply of fourteen refuse collection vehicles with a value of 3.6 million pounds over a five-year period. We also ask committee to note points two, three and four, that the current contract has been extended for twelve months until September 2022. The extension may be shorter depending on the lead time of the new vehicles. Also noting the contract extension will be met in existing waste services revenue budgets with no requirement for additional budget allocation. The vehicles on this contract will be supported by an additional four vehicles on rolling one-year hires. This allows vehicles to drop off on the introduction of the national deposit return scheme or when technology advances to introduce alternative fuel vehicles. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Kirsty. And again, I'll remind you that the appendix is exempt. So if it's anything to do with the detail of the, the commercial side, we're going to private session. So I've got councillor Tolmasz followed by councillor Madury.
Okay, thank you. A question about, so, okay, okay, you're convinced that we had the right mix of the vehicles and especially smaller vehicles to access the parts of the routes where the larger vehicles cannot get into. And the second question is to do with electrification or, or perhaps another way to fuel the vehicles. Is there sufficient flexibility in your view if new ways come to fuel the vehicle that we are not tied into contracts that we can't be flexible? Thank you.
Sorry Kirsty, I thought you were going to reply. I've got Bruce Ricky and then Kirsty in that order.
Thanks convenor. Councillor Tolmasz, just in terms of the flexibility of the vehicles under considerations at 2.1 and 2.2, we've laid out obviously the flexibility that we have within the fleet. There's been considerable work done by members of staff down at the Waste Service in relation to the actual mix of the routes and the mix of the beats that we've actually got at this point in time and what we may require going forward as well. So hence reason obviously that there's the three sort of smaller access vehicles at 2.13 within the report. And we also have those additional support vehicles listed at 2.2.2 as well. So certainly that we feel we've got the right mix of vehicles for the types of streets and the geography of the Stirling Council area as well. So certainly we feel that that balance is, is correct. And the way that the contract is structured, as Kirsty's outlined, it gives us that flexibility if that picture were to change over that, that period of time as well. In relation to your second point about the electrification of fleet, very much that, you know, this is a five-year lease deal. There will be considerable work going on over the next five years, looking at, you know, alternatives to fossil fuels in terms of a refuse collection fleet. We don't know what that will be as yet. Obviously both electric vehicle options, hydrogen vehicles and CNG compressed natural gas options are out there at this point in time. The main thing for us at this stage is knowing that the vehicle technology is there, but the actual application of the supporting infrastructure is going to take considerable time and work. We have to look at the studies, we also have to look at the broader implications about how we fuel other types of vehicles within our vehicle fleet. Obviously we've got a fairly wide range of vehicles at this point in time. So that work will be going on over the next two to three years. And obviously then the actual development of the supporting infrastructure to allow those, those vehicles to be fuelled through alternative fuels as well. But Kirsty might want to say a bit more on that. She's been heavily involved in the initial phases of that work as well, councillor Tolmasz.
Thank you Bruce. I think you've kind of covered off most of the points here. And just to make members aware, obviously our neighbours and neighbouring councils are running some pilot projects. So we are working closely with our neighbours and colleagues and other local authorities to see how their projects go. We have a number of councils taking a hydrogen route. What that does, it's significant infrastructure and technology, which is very much in its infancy. And it's still a number of years away from being implemented. We have seen the vehicles that are going to Glasgow and we're still looking maybe a year before the first vehicle goes on the road. And beyond that, it's another two to three years before the rest of their vehicles will hit the road. So for us, it's very much learning from our colleagues as we go. So for us, it's very much learning from our colleagues as we go and see what works best for them. And we have that, the length of time that these vehicles will go on the road will make sure we get the right fit for Stirling. For our vehicles, as well as looking at options for Stirling Council area and other businesses within the area, whether it was at fueling stations or the infrastructure required.
Kirsty, would that apply to the wider fleet?
Yes, thanks, councillor. Obviously, we have a significant size of fleet. We've got about 500 vehicles. And it is widely accepted that the smaller vehicles will be electric at this moment, the small cars, small vans. But the larger vehicles will be something probably different. But as I say, the technology is very much there in its infancy. But we need to find a solution that for all our fleet, not just this batch of refuse collection vehicles. And over the next, over this five-year period, we will have other heavier vehicles that will come for renewal. So it will be a kind of raising an approach to the five-year point when these vehicles need replaced again. They will be fully established by that point.
Thank you. Okay, I've got councillor Madury then councillor Errol.
Yes, thank you. That's a summary point to one of councillor Thomas' questions. Yeah, it's this clarification on the access vehicles, because obviously there's quite a few streets in Dunblane and Bridgavallen as well as obviously the wider council area required. So it looks as if we've currently got four access vehicles based on the 12 or 16 tonne unit per 1.1. And we'd move to having up to six access vehicles per 2.1 and 2.2. So just, just wanted to confirm my understanding is correct, that we'd potentially be increasing the number of access vehicles we have.
Thanks councillor Madury. Yes, we would have six access vehicles. Three will be part of this five-year plan. And three will be part of the rolling one-year higher vehicle fleet.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Errol.
Thank you, Jim. I've got a couple. First of all, this updated report contains information about the extension to the current contract, which is given in details with Riverside Truck Rentals, which is obviously for up to September 22 potentially, if needed, with a value of 329K. I suppose my question on that is how does that extent, contract extension cost compare with what we've had in place for Riverside Truck Rentals? Is it comparable? Is it more expensive? Is it cheaper? How does it stack up?
Thanks councillor Errol. It's just a straight extension of the current contract in place. And so the rates that we currently pay will be extended for that 12-month period.
Right, so it's just.
Yes, a straight extension of what's already in place.
Okay, all right, thank you. Another point I'd just like to ask about on page 31 at 2.3, it talks about being on the operating lease and the flexibility that brings. It talks about the National Deposit Return Scheme and road end collections are implemented. I thought that was a dead duck.
That's not one for you, Kirsty, yeah? Bruce?
Sorry, Kirsty. Bruce, thanks. That's councillor Errol. No, obviously, in terms of the, I'll deal with the National Deposit Return Scheme first. Actually, it was just announced yesterday that the National Deposit Return Scheme will be introduced in August 23. There was an announcement in the Parliament yesterday. So obviously, we now have a date that we can plan to in relation to that as well. And in terms of the actual road end collections as well, councillor Errol, there was a report, I believe, went up in 2018, which actually saw approval for road end collections. And still very much that's within our work plan to investigate and look at road end collections in due course as well. And there are a number of routes whereby the actual road surface is not really suitable or applicable for refuse collection vehicles. And we do need to make some changes in relation to that as well. And obviously, there'll be full engagement and dialogue with elected members as we take that forward.
Right, thanks, Bruce. I think that's my concern. So I remember the 2018 report and then subsequent to that, it was decided not to progress with it in its current format. At the time, it was put on the back burner. So as and when it might be coming to the fore in officers' thinking, I would suggest it needs to be looked at again because what was potentially looked at back in 2018 might not be where one ends up in 2022 or 23 or whatever. So as long as we're going to get a chance to have a look at it prior to any implementation of it, then that would be reassuring to me.
Yeah, there'll certainly be engagement and dialogue in relation to that, councillor Errol.
Thank you. My other question is, and this is like an in-principle question, which is quite important for our group to have an understanding on. Well, we're expecting a maybe a straightforward answer, but we'll see. But by agreeing to this contract and therefore the new fleet as configured, would that, should there be a decision in the future to revert to different collection cycles or go back the way to two weekly for grey and blue or any other configuration that might be thought of, does this new fleet give us the flexibility to do that?
Bruce, you want to?
Yes, thanks, convener. councillor Errol, if I can maybe sort of look at it from another perspective, but answer the question is that this is very much designed round about our existing collection services at this point in time. And actually, where future changes such as National Deposit Return Scheme and road end collection may lead us. If there were future decisions made to alter, obviously, the actual sort of collection frequency, obviously, that we would look to either retain those additional support vehicles or indeed spot hires could be brought in if indeed there was an extension to the fleet required.
Right. So I think it's just important to have that understood that should we agree contract approval, new fleet procured, it still retains a flexibility and the flexibility within the service to, we're not hardwiring in something that may change. But, you know, we are where we are in the electoral cycle and we've got local elections in May. So it's just from that point of view, as long as that flexibility is retained, then, you know, we, it's a principal point from our group's position that we want that understood.
What I can say is that there's flexibility in terms of the proposals and the plans that we have in place at the moment, if they were to change and vehicle fleets needed to increase and decrease, that there is flexibility within contracts to do that.
Okay, brilliant. Now, thank you for that.
Councillor Beryl. Yeah, apologies, Chair. I have a question on page 37, which is on the exempt part of the item. Okay. Right, yours seems to be the final question, councillor Beryl. Councillor Errol. You're muted.
Sorry, I did have one on the non-exempt bit, if that was the last one on that, just to.
Okay. Right, we will go into private session to cover councillor Beryl's point. So are there any other issues in regard to the paper? Councillor Errol.
Yeah, page 33, 3.3, the climate change, sustainability and environmental impact. This report does not relate to a planned policy programme or strategy. Therefore, strategic environmental assessment does not apply. I mean, given some of the earlier conversations that councillor Toleman has raised and it's in the paper about, I'm a bit surprised that that narrative sits around that priority for such an important contract. That was all.
Mr. Ricky.
That's convener. No, in terms of strategic environmental assessment, councillor Errol, it does really relate to strategic projects that are of a significant scale and size. And very much that it does relate to things that generally relate to a planned policy or programme and are of a significant size that require a strategic environmental assessment. And certainly, the procurement of these vehicles is not of such a size and scale that would fall under the strategic environmental assessment.
Ah, oh, okay. Right, I genuinely surprised at that, but thanks for the clarity.
Any other general questions? No? Okay. What we'll do, we'll go into private session to cover any issues on the appendix. And we will reconvene the meeting to decide the item after that. So can, Mark, can I ask you to stop the recording, please?
Okay, that's the recording stopped.
Okay, thanks.
Do you like us to start the recording again just now, convener?
Yes, sorry. Aye. Mark, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Okay, convener, I'll let you know when it's back underway. Okay, that's the live stream back underway.
Okay, thank you. We're returning to the public session on the item replacement of refuse collection vehicles. A couple of questions on the details of the contract. Could I ask the clerk, please, to do a roll call?
Thank you, convener. councillor Alastair Beryl?
Present.
Councillor Martin Erle?
Present.
Councillor Danny Gibson?
Present.
Councillor Graham Houston?
Present.
Councillor Alistair MacPherson?
Present.
Councillor Alistair Madury?
Present.
Councillor Jim Thompson?
Present.
Councillor Alastair Toleman?
Yes, I'm here.
That's the eight members present, convener. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I've got no further hands up, no questions. Any comments people want to make? No. Can we then move on to the recommendations on page 29? Recommendation one is to approve the award of the contract as set out in the recommendation. Two is note the extension of the current contract with Riverside Trucks. Three, note the contract extension may be shorter and the value lower. And four, note that the cost for the contract extension will be met from existing waste services budgets. Are we content to accept that recommendation?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. Well, okay, thank you. That concludes the business today. But before I close, can I ask the officer present here today to thank our staff out there delivering the services in extremely difficult times? I think we all deserve a wee break, apart from those that have to work through. But have a Merry Christmas and a good New Year and see you in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.